There he is.[1.53][1.53][laughter]
Looks like a grand and...
There's everybody. Now we know he's here. Right there, buddy. Carol Sweeney with the County Court of Appeals. Please stand and join us in opening prayer. Stay standing for the closing.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all of our blessings. Thank you for the beautiful spring weather we're having. We thank you for the freedom we enjoy. Thank our troops for helping us keep that. We ask that you help us make decisions proper for the county. Amen.
Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you have cell phones and pagers, please dial them before we begin. Number five on the agenda, citizens to be heard.
Act Two. Edwin Duke?
Not now.
Sir?
Not now.
Oh, you're gonna, you wanna wait till the agenda item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is that number 20?
Yes. And if someone brought up that I'm gonna ask for it, I'm gonna just talk about it.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yes, fine.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Burris?
Concerning Agenda Item Number 20, it is hearsay that this has been brought up for the dismissal of Jeff, the Roaden Bridge Administrator. It is my opinion and several people that I have talked with that if the dismissal of Jeff is brought up, that it will not only cost detrimental time in moving forward in the repairs of the roads, but it will also just cost the county a lot of money and time and effort in finding somebody to replace him and move forward. The other concern that kind of ties into this is the $3 million bond. It was my understanding that this item, that Agenda 20 come up because Jeff was not presenting a proper plan for the $3 million bond. It is my understanding that the court has requested Jeff to distribute the $3 million bonds equally between each four precincts. My question to the court is, does it stand within reason for each individual commissioner that is serving on the court to step up and give a plan for roads for their precinct? That way the money can be equally divided up between each four precincts.
Thank you, Mr. Burris. We have some people that have some end of the month reports to get out, so we're gonna kind of stick around the agenda. Please bear with me. Let's go to Black Beach, please. And let's go to Mrs. Frankie with the task report for the court, number 26.
Year-to-date collection for the county, $3,998,029.70. That makes the balance of the current road $238,105.99 with a 94.3792 collection. The year-to-date on the delinquent for the county, $28,620.97. The percentage of collection, 15.2006. Roaden Bridge Special Collection, year-to-date, $553,031.32. The percentage of collection, 94.6059. The delinquent year-to-date collection, Roaden Bridge Special, $2,492.47. Percentage of collection, 16.9537. The Fire Emergency District, year-to-date collection, $317,188.81. Percentage of collection, 94.4455. On the delinquent, Fire Emergency District, $1,584.69. Percentage of collection, 22.7544.
Thank you, Mrs. Frankie. Number 27 is to discuss if approved and disapproved of the Treasury Report. Bob?
I appreciate the court kind of putting the agenda around it a little bit. We have payroll going this week, and my office has to verify that the bills are correct, so I appreciate everybody kind of moving things around. If you look on page three of your report, the two items you need to look at is the interest in sinking and the lateral roads. When we had a CD come in, I put the, I backwards did. I put them into the wrong accounts, so you'll see the corrections on there next month. Lateral roads does not have $167,000. It has a $61,000 in there. So just make a note of that. Just a little side note on the sales tax for the county. I received the December sales tax. Everything runs like two months behind, so in the month of February for the county's sales tax for December was $566,394.36. It'd been running about $250,000 to $300,000. And then yesterday, which I'll bring this up in my March report, I've received the January sales tax, and it was $499,000. So we are seeing an increase on the sales tax.
Thank you for bringing this to us in advance, Bob.
You bet.
Makes it much easier to look at. Or at least know where you're going.
Yes.
I make the motion that we accept the Treasury Report as presented with the modifications notated. Do you want...
Well, the changes were made in February, so I missed, excuse me, in March, thinking.
In March, so the correction will be in the March report. I just don't want you to think we've got that much money in lateral roads when it's actually an interest in sinking.
All righty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. No opposition. Let us get, we'll get, we'll sign and get it.
Okay, and insurance? Did we have the issue with the life insurance here a couple of months ago? And it has been reinstated. The policies that were, claims that were made, all the claims were paid, but we have not received any type of letter from principals or from Jeff saying that the insurance is being reinstated. The judge sent her, him a letter along with my signature a couple of weeks ago, and she sent another letters, or I guess a copy of the letter certified, still asking for reinstatement letter. We're still getting bills, still getting paid, but we just want that piece of paper that we asked for.
But why I told him the letter is we knew that we were covered because of making payments. So we'd like to know that we knew we were paying.
Correct. And claims have been, three claims that were made back in November have been paid, and there hasn't been any issue. We just want those.
We got a phone call yesterday.
Oh, did you get a phone call?
Yes, that we were going to get that letter.
Okay.
And they said that he thought they had sent it, and I said, well, at this point in time, neither Bob nor myself have received it. As soon as Bob receives it, she'll let me know.
And there were some other people that had some issues, and I have discussed that with Jess Williams. So if there's any of your employees that are having issues with the insurance, if they will let me know, because we have an agent that I haven't seen since we signed that contract. So if we're having some problems, we really need to get those taken care of. And if y'all don't let us know, then we don't know.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have anything that they need to do? We need to, you wanna go ahead and pay bills?
Pay bills, please.
Pay bills. Go backwards in your package.
Just going to point out the things that are out of the ordinary. On page three, we're paying Smart's Air Conditioning and Heating, $10,775.82 for the new units at the health clinic on Brown Street. Those monies will be reimbursed to us out of the remaining CECO grant. On page four, at the bottom, you'll see in the sheriff's expenditures, we are paying for three more Tahos. This is out of the amendment that the court approved a month, month and a half ago as far as adding six new deputies and six vehicles, among other items. Each one of those Tahos is $25,776. All other expenditures are basically run of the mail expenditures. If you look on page nine, that is the total that we pay in this pay cycle for materials and hauling for Roaden Bridge, $226,973.59. So our total expenditures for bills in this cycle are $413,949.63.
And again, I want to thank you for bringing this early so we can have a chance to figure out here.
I make a motion to pay bills.
I second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition. Motion carries five zero. Anything else we need to do before we move forward here? Carol, just be really patient with me, because we're gonna do some studies. I have Lorraine here, and I know she wants to go to that meeting.
Sure.
Let's go to number 11. It's discuss, approve, disapprove the application for payment for $36,072.83 to M.J. Boyle for Karnes County Restoration Phase One, Job 685. Put me as the author on that, but that's a bill that Ms. Daley did send me. And so I sent it to Luanne, and we got it, we looked at it, and it looked like that's what she's supposed to do, so.
Yes, I, we're on pay application number 13 now, so I've got a copy of all the previous pay applications that have been approved to date, and we compared the work in place with the funds that have been paid to date. And pay application 13 was approved by the architect for the project, a review by my office, and is submitted for payment.
I make a motion that we approve the application for payment for $36,072.83 to M.J. Boyle for Karnes County Restoration Phase One, Job 685. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No opposition. Motion carries five zero.
Question, since this is approved out of bill cycle, do you want a check cut now for that payment? Or do you want it to wait till the end of the month cycle, which is what we have historically done in the past?
I don't, what do you all think?
You approve it today, I'll pay it today.
Do we need to... Do we need to amend the motion to make it out of payment cycle?
No.
I'm sorry, I should've asked you that when I had it on the agenda.
That's fine.
Okay. Luanne, we got you here, Lorraine. Let's see, is there anything else on here tonight?
Number 15.
Okay. Discuss, approve, disapprove, allowing Lorraine Daley to hire as needed someone to move items, furnishings, and contents to the courthouse. That's all the stuff that was up there, and I think that there's been somebody that was talked to to hire that. We can help you out with the name, unless you have somebody in mind. I know that the historical people have been working with, the people that have been moving and moving stuff, and Carl has been working with, and it's Tim Yanto.
Yeah, I mean, Peter, he was doing, right, and all that stuff.
So I know they have a bunch of stuff tagged.
Yes, the architect and the historical committee went through, and they tagged with red and pink tags things that they want to salvage that are historical in nature and should remain, and things that really can go away. And then there's also a lot of records and documents and boxes of paperwork that are piled in the attic. So the primary concern right now is the rooms that the contractor needs to work in still have some furnishings and fixtures in them, and we need to move those out. And then there's a concern about stresses and loads on the attic floor where there's a concentrated load of paperwork that's piled up there that needs to go ahead. If it's trash, it needs to get removed and shredded and disposed of. So somebody from Karnes County needs to be able to handle moving all of that. And we would recommend that in that main courtroom area, it's a large area, things that need to be, that are going to be kept could be moved into that area. And then the air conditioning can be hooked back up in that area to dehumidify the air and condition that to preserve those furnishings and fixtures. And then items that are going to not be reused historically, the county would need to designate a place where those could be moved to and either sold or salvaged or reused, you know, throughout the county.
And on those, Lorraine, correct me if I'm wrong, while we're on that, I think we get a list of those from, can we move them out? They have to be declared surplus, then they can be sold, I think. You learn that all?
Sold at a public auction.
Okay. So we can do that.
Okay, so essentially, we need the physical person that's going to do, you know, the moving, and then we need a location, approval by the court to the historical items to possibly put those in the large courtroom area, and then a location to move the items that are gonna be salvaged, sold, inventoried, et cetera.
Is there any abatement, asbestos abatement going to occur in the courtroom? Or do you know?
I do not have a copy of the asbestos abatement report yet. I've requested it, and so no, I do not know.
Because if that's gonna go in there, we should make sure we take steps and we don't have the same problem we had before, if something gets damaged or destroyed.
Courtroom is kind of the largest open area to stack things, and there's, to my knowledge, there's no scheduled additional asbestos abatement.
There's probably isn't any in there. There's something there, but it's covered by the carpet.
So that would happen in a future phase. We could, if the county has a place where it could be moved off-site and secured, and, you know, then that would be another option.
What stuff are they talking about?
There's just a lot of desks. There's old...
Probably some specialty building across the street, but I don't know. Once we get everything together and we shred a bunch of stuff that's in there, we'll have more room. There are some boxes that don't need to be shredded, too.
Because there's not a lot of room in that right now.
Bob has the keys. I'll show you where that's at. If you go downstairs, you're at the end. Do you still have them right now?
Yes. Carol and I both have keys.
Okay.
One person can't have, isn't supposed to have both keys. It's a controlled building, so we have to get together to get the keys.
Okay.
But we can, I'll be, put that...
You mean, both have to go there alone?
I'm sorry.
Both have to go there alone?
Well, you, I can go, because on the record management, I can go in there and get her the, get the other key to the records room in there. And so, yeah, we can look at it and see.
Okay.
And I think some of that furniture that was in there was asked for by other departments, and I don't know if they ever received it yet. I think some of them, on the first floor, some of them had tags of different people that wanted them, and that would be something we need to probably get with them and tell them it's available if they want it now.
Needs to be coordinated, but ideally, if there's one person that represents, you know, that can be hired to represent the owner in moving all of this and inventoring it, et cetera, that would be ideal. And then if there's other departments that say, well, we wanted this or wanted that, there can be some type of a system set up to be able to track that.
Will I make the motion to approve allowing Lorraine Daley to hire as needed someone to move items, furnishings, contents out of the courthouse?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Who got that, say it.
Everybody? Any opposition? Motion carries five zero. And we got you here, Lorraine. Menu number 19. It's discuss, approve, disapprove the purchase of city, of city-owned property designated for the new jail construction site. Purchase was previously budgeted in net amount of $54,845.19 by Commissioner's court. What that is, is we need to, if we're gonna get ready to do USDA or go out for bonds or out for elections, we need to have our property secured, and we have that budgeted. So that's all that is, is go ahead and making it kind of just final.
The only comment that we would have is we've looked at the site. Everything looks fine. I don't know if the USDA is gonna require a Phase One environmental. Sometimes public agencies do require that, and we may want to check.
You better talk with us about all that. Remember that, we did talk about that.
We had a report, TCQ did a cleanup, and we had that report, and we sent it to Roberto Martinez, who was supposed to get with USDA on it. I talked on the phone with USDA people, and they said, no, we can't guarantee that that's gonna say this pass. So we haven't heard from USDA on it. Betty Social, the last minute we had, Betty Social said, I'll take care of it. Haven't heard from her, so we asked her.
After, but after we did the proposals, Alberto told me that this was the next step, to put this on the agenda.
Okay.
And the agreement that I think that we have with the City of Karnes City, if this wasn't what we were using it for, that they were taking it back anyway or buying it back or something. Wasn't it, there was something, wasn't that it, Bob, when we were all over there?
There is some kind of, yes.
Okay. Then that's all, you know, we just want to get it that far.
Then that sounds...
Bob, when the county buys properties, the lender usually requires a Phase One and a Phase Two, don't they?
Yes, probably so, but since it's been done by TCQ, they may accept that. They don't accept it, then there's a big problem.
Didn't you just say they're not guaranteeing anything, TCQ said?
The two people I talked to said they couldn't guarantee.
So then it'd be wise to do the one and the two.
Typically, what happens is, I mean, Phase One tells you whether you need a Phase Two. If it gets cleared in Phase One, then you know, go to the Phase Two. But as long as the, as long as the agenda or the agreement with the city allows, I mean, if it's not used for the jail, then you're not committed, then it sounds like this would be...
It would all be used in the jail. There are two, two places there. I have one where they stored the cotton poison, and one where they had the liquid fertilizer. Liquid fertilizer shouldn't be a problem, really.
What are you talking about, cotton poison?
Years ago, they used to have cotton poison, and it was in that one building, but that was all cleared out.
Arson?
We got arson, then I watered it away. Should we wait until we have, make sure that we don't get...
I don't know, he just told me this is my next move.
Well, I don't know whether the city has the right to want it back. And you, of course, have the kind of grease to it. But their, their, their ownership of that property is no different than ours. It's a trust.
I make motion to approve the purchase of the City of Karnes City property designated for the new jail construction site. Purchase was previously budgeted in net amount of $54,825.19 by Commissioner's court.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries five zero. Lorraine, they can get you some phone numbers. These guys know the phone numbers and stuff if you need help, okay?
Thank you.
Okay?
Appreciate it.
Is the sound system working? Is it a little hard?
Can you hear it? I'm sorry, Mr. Burris. Do you want to do the Roaden Bridge stuff? You can go with... Do we want to do the certification of the additional revenues so we know what they are first? Is that what we need to do, or...
Well, that's fine. I mean, you don't have anything on here to amend the budget, so that's fine.
Okay, so we're just doing, number 14 is a certification of additional revenues for Roaden Bridge. Luanne has permits, roads, entrances, received 10/11, 10/11 to 2/12, $194,887.24 fiscal year 2012, budgeted for permits, right-of-ways and entrances, $100,000 additional revenues for fiscal year 12, $94,887.24.
That is through February 29th. We have received additional money since then, but that is the cutoff date used.
Then we can move to item, sorry.
Does this mean that these items, this amount of money is available in additional funds for Roaden Bridge to spend? Is that what it's saying?
It's additional revenues that we've received. I have to certify any additional revenues if there is a contemplation of using them. The budget would have to be amended to spend this money, correct?
So now we can go to number 20. It's discussion and house of action regarding comments and complaints regarding Roaden Bridge Administrator and personnel. And that's number 20. And because it's a personnel issue, it can be done in executive session. So I make a motion we go to executive session. And before we leave...
Did you go?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
You're off the record.
Sorry, wait, can I get one thing on the record? My apologies. I would like to ask, invite Luanne, just because she had the figures and stuff that Jeff asked for and stuff, so she can be, they can be able to answer these questions in executive session. Does anybody have any opposition to Luanne going in executive session to answer money questions?
Does Jeffrey want to go in executive session? I mean, does he have that right?
You have the right, Jeff. Just say you don't want to executive session, or you do whatever. Oh, you'll be there, I thought, but I mean, do you even want the executive session?
Or do you want it in court, in public?
Or do you want it open court?
You're off the record.
I'm sorry, we can't tie it.
Back off the record, Jeff.
Thank you.
Put you at 9:26.
Okay.
Back at 10:21.
Okay, so I got 9:26 and 10:21.
9:26 and 10:21.
Yes, sir. I'll write it down for you so you can do the executive session thing. All right, we're, executive session discussion was about, obviously, road issues. There were no decisions made. Bob, go ahead, or you guys want to go ahead with some of the issues that we might want to discuss? Want to go ahead with some of the issues we might want to discuss?
Yeah. I think one of the first issues would be to come up with a, an agreement for all of the oil companies to enter into agreement with the, in the county for the, what they're gonna pay for permits and for road repair. Would you just have to come up with one? And I'd like, we'd like to start on in the morning. That's fine.
And that will be?
A contract with the oil companies in the county to take care of the roads through agreements to prepare, fix roads or repair them, or pay so much for an acre, or so much per mile, or so much for something.
Now we're gonna hammer all that out tomorrow?
We're gonna have to hammer it all out.
Like a bore site permit fee, drill a well?
Whatever, yes, because it's a, you have a, but you also have the water problem, the water hauler's problem. But we need to take care of that, not, not just the oil field, but it's in all field. It's oil field problems. But we need to have it set up, because they have people that come through that do water, just water. They do drills under the road, they do a lot of late layout, pipe, temporary or permanent. We need to take care of those, because they also use the road, and they should pay something for that.
And one road permit does not forgive another.
No. And it's something that just cannot be worked out. Then we're gonna need to have a, I think the next pressing item would be to have the roads numbered and have them, have them, take a look at them and come up with an estimate, cost estimate, to repair them or patch them or keep them, keep them up. I don't think we can, I don't think you can rebuild the roads and have them stay until after all this traffic and so forth is diminished. Does that make sense?
Kind of settled down, yeah. No sense trying to fix anything permanent.
Not right now.
We just have to put a Band-Aid on it, keep, try to keep some of the people happy.
Keep everybody happy as much as we can with Band-Aid, because if you go and fix a new road, it's gonna, look, 13053, 13053, is that the one? Comes out of Karnes City, comes into, they put new steel coat or whatever they call it, the hot mix on top of it, and it's, it's already coming apart. That hasn't been, not even a year. So that's no point in doing that. It's much more economical if you Band-Aid it, patch it, and keep everybody happy so they can come in and out, but you can't drive 60 miles an hour.
And then another thing that we, we need to add, well, I'd like to ask Jeff for written reports. I know you came in to give us a verbal report. The written report would help, so people will know where you are and what you're doing, or what you're, what it is you're telling us we're doing. If anybody else wants to work and help with those reports, you're definitely more than welcome to do so. And copies of, from the oilfield companies of who's doing what. If Conical Phillips has given you something, let us know. If EOG's given you something, let us know. Whoever's given you... If whoever's giving you, those are just examples, I'm not saying that they're, you know...
Marathon, nobody gives a...
Marathon. If, you know, if people are donating you stuff, let us know. That doesn't exempt you from permits, that doesn't exempt you from anything, I mean, but they need to use those roads as bad as we need to use those roads.
Need to recognize...
We'd like to recognize those that are.
People that are, don't they?
I mean, even if it's some way, for you to give us a written report, we can, we can share it with the media, we can share it with Clyde, we can share it with Joe. I mean, I don't know how we could get that as a public service announcement unless, just like a thank you for those that are doing it, so we can point it out. Is there anything else? I mean, something about, I guess, developing complaints in writing, so we'll know who's complaining, and, you know, looking for possible dates to get stuff fixed, or Band-Aiding, or whatever it is that we're doing. Because we're just, we're getting bombed. We're getting bombed with complaints. The complaints are numerous.
Pretty easy to answer, though, though, once you get these, these two items that I was just talking about in place. Have some idea what the road's gonna cost, it's gonna be an estimate, it's not gonna be exactly, but it should be close enough to do what we need to get done. And this, uh, and the, and the public needs to realize also, the three million bond, the, the three million bond that we're going to oppose to try to work on these roads is not gonna repair all the roads in Orange County. We're the, we're falling behind with all this. I have a couple of engineering groups here that'll, that'll, I brought in, that have talked to us about some stuff, and we're gonna try to get over the hump of trying to help us also with, uh, what can we do to, uh, to survive, as talking with the taxes, so Orange County won't be responsible, the taxpayers in Orange County to be responsible for the amount of tax on the roads then, to repair the roads after this is all said and done. It's gonna take man fire, and it's gonna take a lot of equipment, and all of you all know that. And, uh, and I think we're gonna keep falling behind with this, and everybody needs to know that. It's gonna be a tough, tough go out there, and when you look at sixty to seventy percent of the roads in Orange County, are most probably like the roads going to Mr. Yanis', they're, they're bad. And we can only haul one out at a time. And then y'all see the cost, what I gave y'all on three twenty-six, what this road is costing. It's gonna take millions to fix Orange County back to where we can travel.
That's what I, my thoughts are, that, you know, we need to start working on his budget for next year, and see what we're gonna need, because we're gonna need...
We're done, I'm done making notes on that, Carl, and it's, we're gonna be asking for more, and I, I'm just hoping that we will have the money there, so we can go forward, so we can keep the public rolling. And that's, uh, the biggest deal is gonna be money. Everybody sees their mile of roads they want fixed, but look abroad, we got five hundred and eighty-some miles of roads in the county. That's a lot of roads, lots of roads.
Thank you, Jeff. Now, number twenty, it's a discussion of possible action. Is there an action to take, or, but if we take no action, that's fine, but Carol, I would like, can we capture something about computing the cost association per road for the bond money? Implementing fees, and copies of who's doing what, and writ reports, because everybody else turns in a writ report, and, not badging you, Jeff, we just need something in writing, so we can show the public what you're doing. I mean...
It's Spanish, it's English.
And we don't, we just, we just, we just don't have a way to get it out. I don't have a way to get it out there. And, I mean, you know, you tell me, and then I tell you, and then I forget half the stuff you tell me. And so, having it in writing would help. And that's just so we're all clear, that there is something, and it's not a no act, I mean, yes, it's no action that we're officially taking, but there's ideas that are being implemented.
That, that's the discussion, we'll put that as discussion, but no action.
Can you do that? Thank you.
Yeah, we'll just, that's the whole item we're discussing, the whole action to take.
Should we give her a copy?
We gave you all?
Yes. You can hand that to her, Priscilla. Jeff, did, yes, I missed it, you don't...
We need agreements with all companies for well size, water transport, and road repairs. And that's taken from number twenty.
Uh, Carol, did you hear Pete's part?
I'm sorry, I didn't. Say it again.
I don't know if she included, we need agreements with all companies for well size, water transport, and road repairs.
Any company that uses that road to service a oil field rig, needs to be in some way permitted.
And that's what they're supposed to badger out tomorrow?
Yeah.
Just catch Shaw, that is the discussion.
Thank you so much. Mr. Ju, did you want to speak on this?
Well, I shall bring it up now, it's what I want to find out, because the money's the biggest part of it. You don't have the money out there, but you need to. You don't need to give the county, or the roads and bridges more money, before they can work out with the problems. And that's it.
Thanks, Mr. Ju. Well, we started with Jeff, we're finishing roads, before we go anywhere else, okay? Because if not, it gets bouncy. Twenty-one, I, I, Mr. Kelly had someone too, maybe I had someone. Mr. Kelly, why don't you go, and then we'll finish, we'll, we'll go, keep going, and that, let's go to number sixteen. I'm sorry, Carol, I mean, very simply. It's discuss road and bridge contract with oil companies, County Road one twenty-five, production report, punishment of oil company, eighteen wheeler traffic on County Road two fourteen, one twenty-four, season, and one twenty-five, and the author's Stan Kelly.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
In doing this contract, use the terminology, maintain the road. As a pitching, packaging and pitching, maintain the road in good drivable position. That means it's gonna be repaired till they get through with it. That's just a thought.
That's the idea, I believe, Mr. Clark.
What I wanna discuss today is the road and bridge contract, and what needs to be done to force these oil companies to do their job that they signed up to do. Now, at one time, Mr. Busman said it, there's a lot of different oil companies on the same county road, and you couldn't make a determination of what oil companies' trucks destroy the road. If you don't look at this bottom paragraph down here, it is further agreed, the order of the County Road Administrator, Prescient Commissioner, or the Commissioners Court granting this application shall be and does constitute acceptance on the part of the county of the offer therefore made, and so order this app, and order that this application shall constitute a contract between the party here to their heirs, assigns, representatives, and successors according to the terms hereof. Talisman had bought on one twenty-five, it's three miles long, from two thirty-nine to one twenty-four. Talisman had bought up every well, five well sites, active well sites, on that road. So, they are obligated to repair the entire three miles to one twenty-four, according to this. They've got two well sites on one twenty-four, so from those well sites down to seventy-two, they should be held responsible for those. Now, in the contract, it says that either the road administrator, precinct commissioner, or the Commissioners Court shall notify either verbally or in writing, uh, that it, its agents, servants, and employees, and contractors have damaged the road, so this is their contractors, and their employees, and any subcontractors they have. My suggestion, and this will go back to the second sheet, is to contact the companies by phone. Now, it says in the contract, within forty-eight hours, they're supposed to take some action. That's just ridiculous. No oil company's gonna start working in forty-eight hours, that's just two days. But in forty-eight hours, send a certified letter, there's two ways to send a certified letter, just, five, a certified letter, it's five dollars and seventy-five cents, and anybody that's at that company can sign for and accept it. There is a certified letter of service, restricted delivery, that means that the person that it's addressed to has to sign for it. That way, you know, the man you've talked to has gotten a letter stating what needs to be done, the length of the road, all the details on it. Now, you wait ten days for part of the, uh, oil companies to respond, and say, call back and say, "Hey, we've got this, we're gonna act on it," and they send you a letter back and say, "We're gonna do something." If they don't respond within ten days, or you don't get that receipt back, or the certified letter is returned to you, then you take all that information over to the county attorney's office, stating the time called, the date called, the time you sent this certified letter, a copy of the certified letter, all pertinent informations that apply to this particular oil company and this particular road. Mr. Busman says that within receipt, he can get a letter out to the oil companies within ten days. Now, when he takes it to the oil company, he takes the original for Mr. Busman to act on, he takes a duplicate, everything he's sending to Mr. Busman. He has a date stamped by Mr. Busman's secretary, she'll sign and receipt that she has got it, I've already talked to her, and she will put the time down she received it. That way, road and bridge has a copy to file, and says, "Hey, Mr. Busman has gotten this, uh, letter, or information, we know it because he signed for it." Now, I would like for the road and bridge administration to report once a month, of all the oil companies that they're having problems with, they're, they're not doing these, to blow them off, or, or whatever, give this to you verbally, and in writing, "I've given you this here," so each of you Commissioners and judges can look and see exactly what has been done. Mr. Busman said he would give you a verbal and written report on the things that were brought to him, and what he's done, and when he's notified the company by certified mail, and what they have responded or not. If at that point in time, you've gotten no action out of the oil company, then you would come back to the Commissioners Court for you to seek services of an outside attorney to litigate for your damages. I think that what we need to do, it's three, basically, there's three departments, there's road and bridge, county attorney, and Commissioners Court, that need to work in concern with each other, keep track of this stuff, push it, and stay right on top of it. Save that three billion dollars for the county roads that are not damaged by the oil companies. Any questions? I take it as none.
I like that writing thing, Mr. Kelly.
I do, too.
That way, we're following it with Carol. If Jeffrey, where'd Jeffrey go?
Stay right there.
He's giving us a road report, it gets filed with Carol, and everybody can look at it. But Jeff, I just didn't want you to think I was talking about you while you're out of the room, because I said, Jeff, I said, "You're filing something, you're filing it with Carol, it becomes part of the Commissioners Court record of what you're doing, and that way, we have accountability to the public for what you're doing." And that, that was it, Mr. Kelly.
That it?
Yes, sir.
Then I expect to have my road fixed Thursday?
This afternoon.
Now, there's two ways to do it.
This afternoon.
There's one where you hire an attorney, and you pay all the fees, and such as this, and he goes, he collects the money, he doesn't. There's the other way, where he shares...
Contingency fee.
Contingency fee. It's just checking if I'm wrong. He takes and pays all the charges, the filing, and all this other stuff. And if he wins, then he shares a portion or a percentage of your recovery. If he doesn't win, then the county's not out any money. Is that be correct?
It's correct.
So, that's something that you just have to decide and think. Well, by December, will my road be fixed?
Jeff, Mr. Kelly's talking to you.
About three o'clock, Mr. Kelly.
I'm asking, will my road be fixed by December?
Three o'clock, afternoon.
I mean, by the, uh, oil companies?
We'll see. We're, we're just gonna have to start working with them.
Okay, but if you can really get those letters out to them, and the certified, and I've given you a copy of all this.
Yes.
I left it by your office, okay? All of a sudden, it took a long time. Next time, I have one of these, how about put them to you in the meeting, will you?
Well, you can't, you can't conduct a business like that. You gotta figure it all out. We can't time that, we can't tell you what's gonna happen, that'd be premeditated, wouldn't it?
Okay, thanks very...
That'd be illegal, I mean.
Yeah, I like giving you the best, I understand. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
All right, Jeff, we're going to number twenty-one, where'd you go? Jeffrey? Jeffrey? You can't, Jeff, come back. It's you, number twenty-one. Discuss approve, disapprove, Orange County Road and Bridge Department's request to purchase two tractors with belly dumps needed to perform road maintenance on county roads.
This is, uh, something that I wanna kinda start on the, on working on, to try to see if we can get, uh, start getting some new equipment to help us out up and down these roads, because we desperately need. I'm just bringing this to y'all, asking y'all permission to, for me to start forward. I think we do have the money to, to cover a couple of tractors, where we can buy them, where I can go out on, on bid, and we'll have to put it in the paper, right? Put it in the paper, advertise for them, and not only to one company, but the amount of companies who comes in with a, with a better deal for us, and, uh, to see what, uh, all the equipment that we need on the trucks and everything, and then we'll go from there. This is not, this is just to get permission, so we can go forward, if we have the money to do it. And that's why I'm looking towards auditor, give me answer, yes or no.
Depending on the cost, we should have the money.
Yes, ma'am.
When the bids are written up, the specs, they need to be very generic, they cannot be specific to any brand of trucks.
No, it's gonna be tractor to pull belly dumps around to get us, help us out on the county roads, with the trucks that we have now. I'd like to slow them down a little bit, put them on the shorter trips, because they are costing us way too much, when Tracy's seen the, the bills on some of these trucks, we've seen them coming through. Pickups, we had one pickup, we just prepared, let's get away from that, but I had one pickup we took to Alexander Shad, spark plugs changed, and we had the engine pulled on it, to have spark plugs changed. Expensive spark plugs.
So, you're gonna advertise, Jeff, for two...
Yes, ma'am.
Two of these?
Yes.
You're gonna do this, like, soon?
You're going to get me the specs, and I'll do the advertising?
Yes, I will give, uh, you the specs, I'm gonna let her do the advertising, and, uh, we'll go from there, and, uh, the cost is gonna be the deal, but I need to find out some cost on trucks to go make sure, and I'm gonna check back with Jasper, make sure that we're not gonna go over the boundary of what I wanna spend on trucks.
We have to advertise for two weeks, and wait seven days before opening, so the sooner you can get that to me, the sooner the ball can be rolling.
That's what I wanted to get started, so I was, I was spitting on the line.
All right, I make motion to approve, Orange County Road Bridge Department request to purchase two tractors and belly dumps needed for the performance of road maintenance of the county roads.
I second.
On the, on the belly dumps, I will look hard to see if I can find some used belly dumps, instead of trying to buy new ones, because new ones, you're looking at thirty-plus thousand per trailer. I may come up with some, they're, they're out there, might be able to find some used ones somewhere, may go for used ones on that. I'll put it out there and see what we can find, so we'll save money we can...
Okay.
Okay, so the motion was made for tractors and belly dumps.
Yes, ma'am.
But...
I'll, I'll do...
What needs to be clarified is what's new, because that's gonna cost more than fifty thousand that we're advertising for.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I think the motion needs to say authorizing for two tractors...
Yes, we'll go for a separate...
Separate from the belly dumps, because we're not...
On the belly dumps, we'll do the separate deal.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so we had a first and a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? No opposition, motion carries five zero. Bear with me one second, can you guys, let's do something really quick, we have a lady from I.S. out there waiting for, uh, number twelve. I'm sorry, Jeff, did you just bear with us?
That's fine, that's fine.
What this is, is discuss approve, disapprove amendment P zero 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 four, the I.S. agreement with Jash Lank for government-owned vehicles. This is the exact same one we signed last time, I mean, the exact same one. We had given Amber Martin permission to do the signatures for us, and then they decided, no, they didn't want Amber Martin to do the signatures for us, they wanted us to do them ourselves, so they're gonna send every single one of them to meet a sign, they can't make up their mind who needs to sign it. So, what this is, is it's the exact same one, except we'll be signing them ourselves, instead of Amber Martin signing them. Does anyone have an issue with that, or the exact same thing, Carl? I didn't have to have another copy, because I just got a copy.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, and I need to be allowed to execute, so I can hand it to her, please, if y'all, if y'all approve it.
The motion should include, the judge had authority to execute, uh, yeah, execute.
I make a motion to approve amendment P zero 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 zero...
I make a motion to approve amendment P-00004 to the ICE agreement which adds language for government-owned vehicles, giving the county judge authority to execute.
I second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No opposition, motion carries five zero. I'm so sorry, they decided that it was, that it's a change back again. Okay, we're going back to you, Jeff, discuss approve/disapprove request at Karnes County Road and Bridge Department to be able to hire part-time road maintenance employees at the rate of twelve dollars, and the offer's gonna be Jeff.
Okay, on, on the, to hire part-time help, I'm talking not hiring somebody off, this is going to be experienced blade operators, only, only to hire blade, blade operators, truck drivers, I'm gonna try to fill our slots, if I'm hiring full-time people for that, but this is a person that can come off the street, that knows how to run and maintain, there's people I'm looking for, and I got a few people in mind already that will come work for me, but they have, that's kind of a price that I have to arrange, and we can move some of that around to fulfill that, and it's only gonna be like twenty, maybe thirty hours a week, it may be ten hours. I may need him one day, if I need him, he'll work, and then next day, he may not, so it'll be on a deal like that.
Okay, but wait a minute, to move monies, we need to be able to say, if, if your maximum hours per week would be thirty-five hours per week, times the number of weeks remaining, we need to specify so I can assign dollars.
Okay.
To that amendment.
Okay.
So, what's your maximum number of hours per week?
We'll go for the, uh, let's go for the thirty-eight hours maximum, so we don't have to, we stay under that, we don't have to worry about the retirement and insurance and all that.
Okay, so there's twenty-eight weeks remaining in the year, work weeks remaining at thirty-eight hours, that's a thousand sixty-four hours times twelve dollars per hour, we'd be looking at twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars for part-time workers.
Do you really feel that you're gonna find somebody for twelve dollars?
Yeah, I don't have people lined up for it. I do have people lined up for it, and I need, that's what we need bad, is somebody that mind maintaining the money.
Okay, so what the question is now, is thirty-five hours per week total, or is that for one person?
Yes, one person.
One person is all you're going to be looking at at a time working part-time? Or are you?
Two, two, I'm sorry, I did say two, let me go back, I did say two, yes.
Okay, so potentially, two people.
Two times.
Thirty-eight hours per week for twenty-eight weeks.
Yes.
So, then you'd be looking at.
Twenty-five dollars. Four hundred, yes. Two times, I got two people lined up for the job.
Okay. So, your total allocation will be twenty-five thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars. Now, my next question is, is that in addition to all the full-time positions you have, are we moving that twenty-five thousand dollars out of your current budget for full-time labor? Is this an addition, or?
Yes, I'd like to make an addition, and I'd like to come back to you guys.
So, it's a budget amendment, then?
Yes, I'd like to amend that, because we're gonna need the money, because I'm trying to come up with more drivers for running, and, and some more part-time people that we need, sign the triage, and everything else.
Okay, so, this item does not request a budget amendment, so we'll need to have it on the next agenda to amend the budget.
Does the amendment have to be a separate item, or you wanna?
Yes, yes, it has to be separate.
Whether it can approve him, uh, higher part-time.
Contingent on approval of the amending of the budget.
Now, um, I'm getting ready to have to have a special meeting, I think I told you all that earlier, due to some stuff that's coming in, and I'd like to close that, you know, pretty quick, so, can we get the language for that? Are you gonna send me the amendment, or you want Jeff to?
I can.
Thank you, Alana.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so where were we? So, I make a motion that we approve a request for Karnes County Road and Bridge Department to be able to hire our part-time road maintenance employees at the rate of twelve dollars an hour contingent upon the budget amendment.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
No, Jeff, stay there. Jeff?
One more.
Yeah, we don't know where you think you're going. Okay, number twenty-three, in the interest of Karnes County, at this time, I am presenting a list of the following roads that need to be built back up to safe and adequate road conditions for the citizens of Karnes County. It is essential that road material bond of three million dollars be expedited in a timely manner to proceed with repair of county roads projects to build them up. Jeff has numerous county roads listed, I'd like to actually offer you an agenda versus reading all these numbers to you.
Well, maybe we need to take a look at tabling this, or just passing it over, because until we sit down with tomorrow or the next day, and get some estimated values, or the cost of estimate, uh, the estimated cost of fixing the road, you're really, you're sort of just blowing in the wind.
Okay.
This is just an acknowledgement of which roads need to, can.
Do you want me to freedom to y'all? Okay, and so anyway, I guess what we're saying is, you're saying, Mr. B., that when you guys meet tomorrow and get that form ready.
Well, hopefully, we'll have time enough, because we may have to go into Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday also.
As long as we can get it ready. We just, we just need some relief.
I agree.
I mean, road complaints are pouring in.
But the question is, is it?
We can take no action.
Judge, that's, just for the public to know, there's forty-seven high priority roads right now, and the list is gonna keep growing. I just wanna make that a vital to y'all.
I actually, did you, did you provide somebody, Crisilla, are you still here?
Uh-huh.
Will you provide Carol with a copy of, of this?
She did.
And is this the same roads that are listed?
Yes, ma'am.
These are the exact same, the roads are, they're saying are high priority, he has the base and stuff, what he'd like to put on there, you are more than welcome to view those in the county clerk's office. Is that okay, Carol?
Yes.
All right.
I get it.
So, we're taking no action on number twenty-three? Number twenty-four, on the matter of Karnes County permit fees collected, it was the understanding that permit fees were deposited into a permit fund, uh, under Karnes County Road and Bridge Department. At this time, clarification is needed as to which account fees are deposited into verification of total balance, and who has authority on permit funds. Commissioner Schindler precinct four, a permit liaison, has balanced receipt books from when he was the signed permit liaison in February two thousand eleven to present day, with a total balance of three hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty cents, with regard of fiscal year, three hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty cents, total permit fees collected of March two thousand eleven to March seventh, two thousand twelve. It has been researched that in surrounding counties, permit fees collected using precincts are by Road and Bridge Department. The Karnes County Road and Bridge Department would like to see this approved in Karnes County, and this was Jeff.
Okay, but, uh, when Ms. Gaspar can answer, on number fourteen, that pretty well answered, answered what I needed answered, so that's, that's basically what's in here.
Okay, but let me do some clarification on that, I know I clarified it with Tracy earlier, but.
You did me too, you told me, but go ahead.
Fiscal year's run October first through September thirtieth. Tracy was basing his numbers on March through March.
Right.
What we collected in fiscal year eleven, which started in November of ten, when we actually had our first permit fee to September of eleven, was one hundred and fifty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. That money went into the unencumbered fund balance of Road and Bridge, which means it's in the savings account for spending. This fiscal year, ten, October first, two thousand eleven through March eighth, two thousand twelve, we've collected two hundred and seventeen thousand thirty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents in permit fees. It is in Road and Bridge account right now. The amount of permit fees that we anticipated using in this year's budget is a hundred thousand dollars, so you take that off of that, and you get what is in addition. We have collected through March eighth, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents in road permit fees, that has all gone into Road and Bridge.
Thank you, Alana. Number twenty-five, um, presentation by engineering group to discuss impact study of Karnes County roads. She would be Jeff.
You guys wanna come up? I'll let y'all do, each of y'all, so.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, uh, I'm Steve Montecchio with Page Dawson Engineers in San Antonio, and also with me is Tom Regal, and Tom wants to give us some handouts, or.
Okay.
So, we're gonna discuss real quickly.
Thank you.
One of the things that, that we've seen in visiting with Jeff, and certainly what we heard here this morning is, you know, the issues that you all have with the, with the county roads, you know, tech stocks having the same problem with their roads, and they're trying to figure out how to, what the extent of the problem is, and how to fund it, uh, and what we heard from Jeff and others is that, uh, y'all have made a commitment to three million dollars to repair as much of your county roads as possible. Uh, there's a, there's a general feeling, I think, that I will agree that the problem is probably bigger than that, uh, and what we would propose is help you determine, uh, as an extension of your staff and Jeff's staff, to help you determine how much of a problem that is. Uh, so, first of all, in the, in the packet we gave you, we've got a map that kind of summarizes where a lot of the existing, uh, drilling sites are, and pipelines, and so, the updates of the county roads. We'd propose just do a phase one study, which really just gets you to, to a point where you understand what the size of, of a problem is countywide on your county roads. In addition to those roads, it's very important we identify those roads that are on the, uh, the school district, uh, bus, bus routes, and, uh, the high-volume roads are where you're also using for EMS service and rural transit routes. We would like to start by meeting with each one of the commissioners, and to talk specifically about the precinct, because you know, uh, you know where your problems are now, and where your issues are, and we'd like to start with that base, and go from there, and do some more detailed study on your, uh, condition of your county roads and your precinct. Uh, that would include, uh, looking, of course, at the, at the pavement structural conditions, uh, the, the function of the roadway there, whether it's, whether it's wide enough to be safe for travel, uh, for, not only for the equipment, but for folks getting to their houses, and from school buses getting out of the roads, uh, the safety of the roadway there, whether there's a clear zone there that you could, uh, in case of, make it safer for, uh, potential accidents, uh, looking at drainage there, it's, uh, what kind of shape the, uh, general shape of the bridges and the culverts are, and whether it's actively drained across the roadway, and then look at any kind of specific, uh, access issues along each of those roadways. And we take all that information and summarize that in a report to you, and also in a GIS, uh, database that's compatible with your system, so it's something that you can use now, five years, ten years, for, for your planning purposes in the county. It would summarize the, uh, where the reconstruction and what the cost estimates are for that, uh, and maybe some ideas about how that, those improvements could be phased, prioritized, uh, and I could put it into a database that you can use, uh, and, and, you know, bottom line, get you to a point where you've got an estimate of what the, really the size of a problem is in the county, and come up with a strategy to, uh, to attack that, and that's includes all of the things you talked about today, about where the sources of revenue might come from, uh, from the oil and gas companies, uh, another bond problem at some point in the future, all of those options could be looked at in the next phase of the study. Also, we could look at, there's some things that came up that were some real engineering problems with the structural capability of the roads or the bridges, we could look into that further in the next phase, and, uh, again, the key part of the next phase is looking at the financial plan, and says, "Okay, now we know the size of the problem, how do we attack it, and how do we fund, uh, those improvements?" That's kind of a quick summary of what we'd like to.
Can I ask you a question, what would something like this cost, for you to do something like that, which you just proposed?
It, it's kind of difficult to do, I think, until we know exactly how this matches up with what y'all are looking at, uh, but in, in the time, Elvin, I think we wanna, we wanna see what, what works for y'all's budget, and we, we probably can do something like this in like a sixty to ninety day timeframe.
No. But, uh, it'd be, you're saying it'd be a sixty to ninety day timeframe to do this study?
Yeah.
Right. What about an estimate, maybe a guesstimate? Nothing, I'm not looking to hold you to anything.
I don't know, when I, when we first looked at that, we, we thought it probably shouldn't be over like a fifty thousand dollar expenditure, in your kind of worst-case scenario, but it's really a matter of, you know, we, we put this thing here, and it's really kind of, you know, we're getting with.
How would we fund?
You and Jeff in saying, you wanna do this, or you wanna do this, or you not wanna do this, and that's what really determines what.
How, how would we fund something like that?
You'd have to make the budget.
I mean, is that, is that something I need to meet with you guys, meet with Jeff? I mean, I mean, it's, we need to do something, our road's a problem.
Judge, the, the key to this is really, uh, Jeff just needs some staff support to kind of get to that point, and, and it'd really be great to put that, you know, give y'all as much control on, on what you wanna be, have done, and how, how, how soon you wanna get it done, and what are your actual.
Honey, have you ran any commissioner, have you been commissioner by commissioner?
Or two.
Or two, yeah, you have two, you have the two groups of two.
Yeah, that's right.
As long as I weren't making a decision with this group, and then a decision with that group, and trying to, you know, as long as it was discussional. Am I, am I right, Bob? Or did I just say something? I am right, okay.
I would rather spend that kind of money on this kind of survey than a salary survey for employees. I think we allocated how much for a salary survey?
Seven to five thousand.
I think we're talking about fifty here, and I think.
Which we probably.
Road situation, probably Trump's salary survey, I don't, can we move it from?
Separate funds.
The Judge, in fact, I'm, I'm Tom Regal, Page Dawson Engineers for the record, one, one thing Steve mentioned, that we're suggesting a phased approach to this, to do the inventory and, and determine the problem first, and then ascertain whether you wanna move into the next step or not. Some of our research, some of your neighboring counties, as well as counties in other states have done this cost allocation studies, and they know what, they've made recommendations based on the axle loading of trucks versus vehicles, and came up with a well cost per, per well, what they should be paying to, uh, uh, repay you for the damages, and accounting to the east of you here, has been negotiated an eight thousand dollars per well, per oil company, and they've negotiated with two oil companies so far, that have cooperated out of the five or six that they have drilling in their county. So, what we'd like to do is, resident, for you to spend money in the second phase, try to determine if there's a lesser cost way to do that, rather than do a full economic study, maybe there's some other data out there that you can use from your surrounding counties. Well, South County just finished the economic study, and came with, their recommendation came back with nine thousand nine hundred dollars per well, that they would expect the oil companies to pay to recover it. Some of the other counties have, like the Gonzalez County judge, they worked some agreements with some of the oil companies, when we're finished with the pad site, the limestone, which is very good material, as they're taking out the pad site, they're taking the limestone out and putting on the access road to rebuild the road. There's a lot of solutions here that may be a lesser cost to you going to phase two, that's why we're recommending in a two-phase approach.
Once you know how much it's gonna cost.
So, it's not true in this well?
And then start looking at alternatives. What is, what can you recover from the oil companies, and how can you hold them accountable?
Once you know your cost to repair these roads, you know how many wells each company's gonna drill every year, you can kind of gauge how much you're gonna have to charge them per well site to come up with that dollar amount.
Yes, sir. And then, and that data is all available, and it's GIS and the Railroad Commission website, which we've put on that exhibit there, at least there's a review, a month or so ago.
What, what counties have you worked for?
We have not, we've worked for Bear Cam, we've done not, not the oil fillers, but we've done steam, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we've, we've helped them as far as developing, uh, their bond programs, and looking at, uh, cost estimating, developing, you know, the scope of what their projects and the costs and sort of thing, helping them prioritize, you know, what ultimately is funding their bond program. That's simply, some of the things we've also, we've done for Bear County and also for the city of San Antonio. And one of the things that Tom is, is doing, and, and just mentioning, is he's, he's kind of developing a list of some of the best practices that some of the other, those, you know, obviously, there's numerous counties here that are kind of having to deal with this problem, and everybody's doing something a little bit different, and I think he's, he's been able to determine there's a, there's a few best practices here that, that could to determine there's a, there's a few best practices here that, that should be applied in this county so that, uh, nobody here has to, you know, come up with an idea from scratch. It's something that's been utilized on the, on the financial level. Like you were saying with the assessments of the oil and gas. I said, the key to it is just to phase one and just trying to get everybody to, to kind of get a handle on what, what the size of the problem is and go from there.
I think we need a solution. I think Jeff.
What, what do you, what do you come up with? Did you come up with, say, we recommend you cover this road with forty-four foot wide, six-inch base, compact etcetera? Do you have engineering specified? What do you, what are you?
I think what, what we found is, I think Jeff, from what I, we've talked to him, he has a section that, that pretty much works most of the time. And I don't think we wanna come in and say that's, that's not gonna be adequate for most of your needs. I think we're gonna start out with that assumption and utilize that. I think what we need to do is see, you know, how many miles need to be improved. And that's, that's where you, you need to find and deal with an estimate on that. And if we find some special, uh, structural problems with some roads in certain areas of the county, uh, we can follow that up with more detailed analysis later on down, down the line. But, uh, we feel like the county has a pretty good experience in building county roads and repairing county roads here. You've got, you've got a section, you've got materials here that, that work and we'd like to work with that. Questions?
I know we need help, but at this time, it's bad shape we're in. I don't know, I don't understand what y'all are recommending it would be ever because besides you tell us how much we just are charging oil companies. No, but I don't, I don't understand exactly what service you're gonna give to us. You don't know what price, so.
Well, again, we're really trying to give you a full county inventory of your county roads to help you prioritize, you know, what needs to be done over and above the three million that you've already committed, uh, to improve, to improve the county roads. Beyond that, we'd like to, I think we'd all like to know if this is a, if it's a, if it's a three million dollar problem, we've gotta take care of. But if it's a, if it's a five million or a ten million, a hundred million, it'd be good, I think, for, for planning purposes for the county to know that and to be able to utilize that to develop a plan on how to implement improvements and how to pay for it. And that's what we're trying to get you to in that first phase.
At this time, I don't think you can tell us exactly how much these oil companies are gonna tear up our roads and how quick they're gonna be gone. So I'm saying at this time, I don't know. I don't see that we're ready for the study right now. We know it's in bad shape.
What's, I think you did one for a fellow, right?
Tom's having a conversation with a fellow?
Um, we haven't had done the study. There's that some discussion. We've had extensive discussion.
Have you done Gonzalez? The surrounding county plate in the Shell areas, which ones have you done? Can you tell us?
We, we haven't done any.
Oh, you haven't actually done them. You just talked to them. Okay.
The, the one assessment study that we did do was for Bear County. If I, if I could talk about price, I was in your last.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please.
I was in your, in your last meeting and I noticed it came up on hiring engineering firms.
Uh-huh.
There's this provision in the law that's, that it's based on qualifications and then you negotiate.
Right.
Normally, many times a public entity, and that's when we propose the public entity. It's not a price basis, it's not low bid, based on qualifications. We have the experience and knowledge and our, our recommendations are consistent with what you would like us to do. And then once you hired us, made the award, then you negotiate the fee. And that's in the state law. That's required by state law. So, so we're, you know, so you were asking about, if you don't know, we have to follow the law.
Right. I understand what you're saying.
Many times a public entity would put a estimate of what they think their budget is. And then engineering firms will say, well, what we can do for that budget, this is the scope of what we can do. And maybe not everything on that list you see there could be done for the budget that you put out there. So it's a two-step process.
We jumped that gun?
Uh, no. No, I just, the, the key to it, Judge, is really determining what you really wanna do and then, and then seeing what that, what that comes out to as far as price. And if there's a price problem, then we can, you know, work that back from the, on the scope of what we're doing. So it's an interactive process.
And thank you for inviting us here.
Well, thank you. Thank you for showing.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Good morning. I'm David Underbrink with Nice with Engineering. I brought also with me James Dodson. James is in our Victoria office. I'm from Corporate Christians. Appreciate your time this morning. He's got some propaganda to hand you, doing, uh, about the company mostly, qualifications. I wanna tell you a little story. About thirty years ago, I worked for TTI while I was going to school up in College Station. And I was involved in some of the very first research that was done by Texas Transportation Institute about oil field traffic in Burleson County area. And I got to help do some of this stuff that y'all are talking about, impact study. So I, I know exactly what y'all are going through. The real truth is, by the time you realize the oil field's there, it's too late. You can't keep up. You can't, you don't have enough time to plan. You don't have enough money to budget for it. And so the real truth is, what you're, what you're looking at are tools to try and help you get.